Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to water at 6:30 PM. Do notice having been posted. Let the record show that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And if anyone in the audience also wishes to electronically record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time. Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law. Roll call. Mr. Laurabe?
Here.
Mr. Giliducci?
Here.
Mrs. Rothwell?
Here.
Mr. Battello?
Here.
And the chair is present. Mrs. Gagliardi and Mrs. Field are unable to be here this evening. We also have with us the superintendent of schools, Julie Jeffrey Schoen over. Director of business and finance, Lindsay Albinaz. Director of curriculum, Elizabeth Haskell. And our recording secretary, Robin Vaccaro. Also with us tonight is Somerset Berkeley Regional High School senior Guy Parento. Guy's going to be representing student representative to keep us informed about what's going on in the Berkeley schools. And he's also going to fill in as the student representative this evening until our student representative is formally designated, hopefully within the next few weeks. But ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next scheduled meeting will be on Thursday, October 18th, 2018. On that evening, we will also have a joint meeting with the Somerset K-8 school committee. The joint meeting will begin at 6:30 and our regional school committee meeting will begin at 7:30. We have several items on the agenda for the joint meeting, which I expect will be finalized soon. The meeting was originally scheduled for the Berkeley Middle School. Unless there's objection, I'd like to have the meeting here at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School to accommodate the Somerset K-8 school committee. And we will schedule our November meeting in Berkeley.
No objection.
Very good. Then we'll move to the first section of our agenda, student achievement, teaching and learning. And we'll call first on our student representative, Guy Parento.
Thank you so much. So, like you had said, I'll be reporting on a few things from Berkeley. So I'll be attending the Berkeley School Committee meetings and kind of taking just a few things from them to report back here to show kind of what's going on throughout the district. So in Berkeley Middle School, Mrs. Kimberly Hebert, the principal, reported that they had the third annual color run, which raised $7,000 for the Berkeley schools and PTF. So that was definitely something that was a very big success and it was the largest fundraiser that Berkeley Middle School has had throughout the years. They had 270 students participate. So it's definitely something to call upon and give them a little bit of credit for. That was pretty cool. And then along with Berkeley Community Schools, they've had all their lockdown and safety drills throughout this month. And that's something as well going on within Somerset Berkeley Regional High School for the start of the school year. It's definitely been a great start to the school year for myself and other members of the senior class. I've heard of all transitioned well and are excited about the upcoming months that we have in front of us. So the class elections will be held on October 9th, so that's next Tuesday, for all grades and all positions. I am currently running unopposed for senior class treasurer, so that's pretty fun and cool that I don't have to compete with anybody. The only opposed position within the senior class is class president, and there's two kids running for that. But every other position is unopposed, so that's kind of cool that we get to see that we already know who we're going to be working with all year. I heard that there is some pretty stiff competition throughout the other grades for these positions, though. I guess that there's, I heard the junior class has like six or seven kids running for president and the sophomore class has a lot. So I guess maybe by senior year, you kind of figure out who does what. I don't know. I guess that maybe that's how it works out. The guidance office has been going around to the English classes, the senior English classes, and giving a presentation on college planning. So it's definitely something that a lot of students, it pertains to all the students within the class. And that's really exciting to see and kind of gets excited about what we have in front of us for the next months with earliest deadlines are November 1st. For me, I know I have a college application due November 1st, so that's exciting. They have the college planning night, October 11th, and that's going to be held in the pack at 6:00 PM. And I know that they are planning on inviting students from Joseph Case as well to attend that night because it's very informative. They have a lot of people talking about financial aid and other opportunities for students. The college fair is tonight in the Student Dining Center. I have Jim written down, I think, but yeah, Student Dining Center. So that's definitely cool. I plan on heading over to that soon to see. I know that there's a lot of schools represented there. They have some representatives from their admissions team. I know some asked some alumni to come back and talk about their experiences at these different schools. So I'm sure that'll be great for all these students and especially I saw some juniors walking into to kind of get excited for next year for them as well. The field hockey team had their pink-out game last night on the turf. The Massachusetts State Police had their pink cruiser there. So that was kind of cool to see that they had their all cruiser decked out with all the pink on there because they're doing a huge campaign for breast cancer awareness. And to have that here is kind of cool. I know that there was two girls on the team that's fathers work on the state police. So they kind of pulled their connections and had that here for us to take pictures in front of and to just raise more awareness for breast cancer. I know that many of the other sports teams here are having their pink-out games soon to raise awareness for breast cancer. The Somerset Burke Middle School versus Berkeley Middle School soccer game took place last Friday night, the 28th. Here at the high school, I'm sure that was fun for all the kids to get to see each other play against each other because they'll be playing with each other next year when they enter the school. DECA, I had to throw a little plug in there for DECA. We have 140 members this year, so that's exciting. We had 124 members last year, so we jumped up a little bit to 140. And we look forward to talking with you guys soon on what we have upcoming this year. And that's about it. So thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. I'm sure that increase in membership in DECA has something to do with the leadership.
Maybe. I think so. Let's hope so. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
You're certainly welcome to stay, but I understand you're anxious to get to the college fair, so feel free.
Thank you all so much. Have a great meeting.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
All right. The next item that we have is the superintendent's update. Just going over.
Sure. So the first thing that I wanted to mention is the Credit for Life Fair that's happening for the second year here at the high school. Second year in a row. This is sponsored by Bakers Bank. I did give you a packet of information in front of you, just showing the different activities that students will be involved in. It's happening this coming Wednesday, the 10th. This is something that our freshman and senior classes participate in. We'll have freshmen on one side of the gymnasium, seniors on the other side, and at the same time, our sophomores and juniors will be taking the PSAT exam. But you can see the number of different activities, if you recall from last year. Many local businesses will be here and students have to go through visiting each station where they have to create a budget for themselves and go through their monthly spending and participate in activities like transportation and costs for education, health and nutrition, furniture, renting a house or buying a house. Each student is given a job, an occupation with a certain salary, and then they have to live within those salaries. So it was a great first year last year, and we're excited to have it happen again. It is ninth, it'll take place between 9:30 and 11:30 on Wednesday. So any school can remember, if you're around and you'd like to come observe it, feel free to do so. Let's see here. One second while I get this ready. In front of you is the SAT data for this past, for the class of 2018. I just wanted to give you, it's just really a quick update comparing 2017 to 2018. You can see that there are two categories that, in 2017, there was a shift in the SAT. There used to be three. There was a writing, a reading, and a math. In 2017, the 1617 school year, it was converted to an evidence-based reading and writing versus separate reading and writing categories, along with the mathematics. You can see that in the evidence-based reading and writing, we increased our scores from a 561 to a 571 this past year. And in mathematics, we gained 15 points from a 567 to a 582 for a total score of 1154. These numbers just came out, so I cannot tell you how it compares to other schools. But we are very pleased to see for, I think this is the fourth or fifth year in a row, these constant increases in our scores on the SAT exam.
Okay. Will it be possible to get some comparative, maybe from just a few select?
I will. This is, like, as I said, this information just came out within the past few days, but I will, I will get those. I'm interested to see how we are, how we compare to some of our neighbors. All right, so-
What about the total number of students who actually took the exam?
Actually, it was 169 members of last year's senior class. And I believe we graduated, it was around 210 or 211. So it was actually a fairly good percentage of our seniors who took the SAT. Again, I've asked for that information, too, to compare that to the previous year. But I believe that's actually a higher percentage of students taking the test now. All right. So with that, and I'd like to share with you the, give you an update on the MCAS and accountability information. So it's really the, most of the information that's in that packet that has the SAT data on top of it. There's a lot of info in here. I'm not, I will skip over many of these slides, or I just touch upon them very briefly. But we did have, as I said, sometime, I think in the spring, the whole accountability system has been revamped. There are lots of different measures now. It's a totally different system than what it had been. So I'll just step you through this a little bit. But first, kind of a high level, what we see are the percentages of students who had proficient or advanced on the ELA math and science tests. The accountability system is still heavily dependent on MCAS. It's not entirely dependent on that. But it is still the biggest factor within the accountability system. So we had 93% of our students scoring proficient or advanced in ELA, 84% in math, and 74% in science, technology, and engineering. You can see that ELA and science experienced gains, one percentage point in ELA, nine percentage points in science. Math had a slight drop of three percentage points. All right. So I went through the indicators for the new accountability system in the spring, but just to refresh your memories, and I pulled some of this information off of Jesse's website. Achievement is still one of the biggest categories. Student progress, student growth, which was part of the old system, is still part of the system here. High school completion. Progress towards English proficiency for English learners. We did not have a large enough cohort of English language learners, so you'll see that that is not something that factored into our accountability. Chronic absenteeism is a new one, as is advanced coursework completion. So in terms of just looking a little bit deeper into those, high school completion is the four-year graduation rate as well as the extended engagement rate. So that's really looking at the five-year and six-year graduation rates for our students. And then the third component of that is the annual dropout rate. Chronic absenteeism, we've talked a lot about that. We'll actually see that we did not earn any points for our absenteeism numbers this year because we actually had a slight decrease or a slight increase in our absenteeism. We'll see that in a few minutes. But what this is, it identifies the percentage of students who have missed 10% or more of the school year, so 18 days. And that goes for excused and unexcused absences. If we have a student who is hospitalized for some medical situation for 20 days, and we have every doctor's note in the world, it is still considered and that student is going to be chronically absent because they've missed, they've missed more than 10% of the school year. So it's excused and unexcused. It also includes students who are suspended. Any absence from school counts towards chronic absenteeism. And then there's also the other new category of advanced coursework. It's the percentage of 11th and 12th graders who complete certain courses. It's mostly advanced placement or the international baccalaureate courses, which we do not offer here at IB. And in math and science, there are a few select classes that they also identify, and I'll get into that a little bit more as well. So how is all of this measured? So on the next slide that you have, achievement. Since we do not have any English language learners or a large enough cohort to count, achievement based on the MCAS scores in ELA math and science account for 47.5% of the overall score. Student growth in ELA and math accounts for 22.5%. High school completion is 20%. And those two additional indicators, absenteeism and the advanced coursework, combined for 10%. So really, what's happening here is the extra 10% that would have been in the English language proficiency category is being split into seven and a half extra percentage points for achievement, two and a half for student growth. So we also have these new categories this year. You can argue whether it's four or five categories, but what it really starts with, there are these two broad classifications. Either schools that do not require assistance or intervention and those schools that do. So you're first, you're first broken up into one of those two. If you are a school that requires assistance or intervention, then you are either identified as a focus, needing focused and targeted support, or broad comprehensive support. Those are like level four, level five of years past. Partially meeting targets and meeting targets are really now the two main categories. So it's essentially like a one, two, three, four system from meeting targets going down. And of those schools who meet their targets, the commissioner does select a few, it's a subset of schools that he identifies that has high achievement, high growth, and exceeds the targets. So those are really schools that meet, but then hit a few other criteria and get the special recognition. And there were 52 schools, elementary, middle, and high, total across the Commonwealth that earned that recognition. South Elementary happened to be one of them, which we're very proud of. All right. So I, meeting targets, you'll see that the scores from that previous table I showed you, any school that earns 75% or more of their total points are their targets, they are classified as meeting their targets. Anything less than 75% is partially meeting. And then for that focus targeted, it's either among the lowest 10% of all schools, one or more of the subgroups has a percentile of less than five, they have a low graduation rate, less than two-thirds of their students are graduating, or low MCAS participation rate of anything under 95%. So we've seen some schools that excel in their MCAS scores, some of the best in the state. But they may have had 94% of their students complete the MCAS due to opt-outs and so on in that district and are in the focused targeted support category. And then that broad comprehensive support, this is, those are those schools that are classified as underperforming or chronically underperforming. All right. So for the ELA, when we look at the numbers, these, this is not the percentage. I just showed you in ELA, we have 93% of our students are either proficient or advanced. But what happens is every student earns, based on their score, they either get 100 points if they are proficient or advanced, or all depending what their MCAS score is, 75 if they are maybe a low proficient or high needs improvement, 50 points if they have a lower score than 25, and ultimately zero. So every student for their, based on their math, ELA score, gets one of those points, 0, 25, 50, 75, or 100. And then we get the average of all those scores, and that's what this composite performance index, CPI, is. So in 2017, we had 97.5. In 2018, we have 98.4. We had a gain of .9. That allowed us to be classified as exceeding the target. So for ELA achievement, we exceeded. Now, it's interesting because when, and Mrs. Haskell and I were looking at this earlier today, 2018 achievement is 98.4. Our target was 98.9. And I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, well, how does that work? We didn't meet our target, but we exceeded in terms of the category and getting the full points. Any school that has 97.5 or above earns, that they're considered exceeding. So that's why we have the four points. I say that because when we, when we look at the next level of math, it's a little bit And then under that, I won't go through everything, but you can see students with disabilities, high needs students, economically disadvantaged. You can see how, what those composite scores are for each one of those categories and what the change was compared to the previous year. And whether we exceeded the target, met the target, improved below, or did not meet.
One last question.
Sure.
Last year's MCAS compared to this year's MCAS.
Yes.
Evaluating the scores did not change. It's just how the roll-up has changed? Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
So in other words, when we're looking at 2017 and 2018, are we looking at apples-to-apples for the most part in regards to the type of test it was on an MCAS?
If, this was still the same, this is the legacy MCAS. This was, actually, 2018 was the last year of the old MCAS. This spring, all students are going to be taking a new version, all high school students, three through eight have already converted. Spring of 2019 has been that target year for the high schools to have a new exam.
Okay, so this is apples-to-apples?
This is still the legacy test. This is apples-to-apples.
Thank you.
So going through, the next one is math achievement. And we can see that math had a higher gain than, in composite scores, than the ELA had. Went from 94 to a 95.8. Our goal, our target, based on this, was a 95.7. That's from our, looking at our 94 from 2017. In one way, we exceeded our target. We had 95.8, .1 points above. However, because it didn't meet the 97.5 level, in order to get the four points, we are considered meeting the target for all students. But you can see in the other categories, the lowest performing students, the high needs, economically disadvantaged, all exceeded their targets. And I'm not exactly sure what that composite score was. But all of these, all of those composite scores are going into this one big spreadsheet determining what our overall scores are. Science achievement, you can see that the composite score in 2017 was an 87.6 for all students. It jumped up pretty significantly to a 92.5. And the science, performance on the science and technology engineering exam exceeded the target in every category going down the list for every sub, every group and subgroup.
And is that because the target is based upon the prior year's achievement?
It is. Now, it's going to be, these targets, we weren't informed what the targets actually were until shortly before the results of the test came out. So we didn't know what we were aiming for. Previously, it was in, I think it was back in 2011, we had targets that were set for six years. Whatever our 2011, it was either 2010 or 2011 MCAS scores were, the goal was by 2017 to cut the gap between that number and 100.5. And it was just mapping out every year, taking that difference and dividing it by, into six parts, so you knew what your target was so you'd have steady growth. I have not seen how the targets have really been identified to this point. It's probably out there, I just haven't come upon that yet or learned about it. So to understand where the 89.3 comes from and what the 2019 target is or will be, I'm not really sure yet.
You know, the percentages?
Yeah. So I don't know if next year's target is still going to be based on the 2017, as if that's a baseline test, the way the former accountability system was, or if that target is going to change every single year based on just the previous year's result. The next two categories are on the growth. So what we just did in those first three slides, that represents the 47.5% of the overall score. Now, the next 22.5% is on growth in ELA and math. And even though ELA, we just saw how they did quite well, they exceeded the target, but the actual growth was below target. The growth here, I'm sorry, the points, anything from, let's see. Anything 60 or higher exceeded the target, so that would have been four points. Anything between a 50 and a 59.9 earns a school three points. Between a 40 and a 49.9 earns two. 30 to a 39.9 earns one point. And anything under a 30 gets zero points. So you can see off to the second column from the right, where we have one point for all students, zero for our lowest performing, one point for high needs, and one point for economically disadvantaged, all classified as below target. So we had high achievement, but overall low growth. And then when we look at our math, math was a little bit better than ELA. We had, actually, for all students, a growth of 53.8, which is good. We obviously want it to be greater than 50, so that earns three points. And then the other two all fell within that range of anywhere in the upper 30s and a couple in the 40s, so below target, but earning one or two points depending on what the actual growth numbers were.
So you may have mentioned this before, but I see there are various cohorts here for students with disabilities and various ethnic and racial backgrounds.
Yes.
And no, no scores there. Is that because the cohort has to be a certain size?
Thank you for asking that. So then we look at our four-year graduation rate, and looking at 2016 and 2017 as the two values, we went from a 96.2% to 93.7, so we dropped two and a half. two and a half percent. So because we declined, we did not earn points for the four-year graduation rate. And all of this is ultimately summed up on one of the last slides in the table where you can see how the points are distributed and our score is calculated.
What does that mean, we declined?
Just because we dropped two and a half percentage points.
Do we know what that is in, in absolute numbers? Or is it a percentage? I see it's, it's like, two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent of, and these are the sixteen and seventeen classes, which I think both had around two hundred twenty-five to two hundred fifty students in those classes. So we're looking at maybe about six students makes up two and a half percent of the, say, two-thirty or so. Is that right? Thank you. So it's, you know, it could be about a six student difference, but because what, next year when we're looking at this, I think two thousand seventeen was actually a fairly large class. And the class of two thousand eighteen was one of the smallest that we've had, like I said earlier, tonight about two-ten. So that's why you really have to compare the percentages. The students are, unless the class's sizes are about the same, it's kind of hard to tell, but I would say somewhere in the five to six student range.
So why is it that the two thousand eighteen, oh, is it because it's, it's one year, you have, you determine the graduation rate twelve months after the actual graduation date?
Yeah, they, they don't look at exactly what happened because there can be students who are considered two thousand eighteen graduates if they get their diplomas in August. As long as they get it before, before this school year begins, they're considered a graduate. So by that point, they're, they always have to be essentially a year behind.
Can we, can we look at that number as it exists at the present time at some point? And know that because six, six more students not graduating in one year from the prior year is a little bit of a concern. It's, it's something of a concern to me, so I'd like to know that it's not a trend that's repeated itself in eighteen as best we can determine the numbers.
And then you look at, if you look at the next slide, so we also had, Mrs. Rothwell, I'm trying to find the, the breakdown for the graduation rate. So a decline of more than point five percentage points earned zero points. Up to a point five percentage point below the prior rate earns one point. This is for, back for the four-year graduation rate. Anything up to point five percentage points below the target was two points. Meeting the target is anything greater than ninety-five percent. Exceeding the target by more than point five percentage points earns the, the full four points. So it all depends on where you fall within those parameters and whether or not you're getting certain points. The same type of situation exists here for the extended engagement rate, even though we also had a decline from ninety-seven point seven in two thousand fifteen to ninety-six point two in two thousand sixteen. The change, the negative one point five change was small enough that it was considered meeting the target. So we earned three points for that category.
You see, going back to the four-year cohort graduation rate, just looking at it, there are some numbers here that are, you know, concerning as well. Eleven point four percent drop among high needs students and eighteen point eight percent drop among students with disabilities. Went down, down in one case from ninety-four point seven percent graduating to eighty-three point three and with students with disabilities from ninety-one point six to seventy-two point four. I think we need to look at that.
We will be. And one of the, I know some of the students in the students with disabilities category that accounts for that is, it is our eighteen to twenty-two program as well. So where students don't earn a diploma when they're eighteen, when they should have graduated, say in the class of two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen, they stay on until they're twenty-two years old. So those students are inherently placed in the, the category of not receiving, not graduating in four years because they're with us for eight years. But still, to your point, there are twenty-nine students in that category, students with disabilities, for instance. So seventy-two point four dropping to ninety-one point two. That raised a flag with me as well.
How many students are in that program that you just mentioned? Because that would work out to be about five students.
We, we have about, I think there are eighteen to twenty-two. It is about five or six.
So could it just be a, is it potentially a?
It, it could be. Or at least it, it's part of it. It's, I'm sure it's not the entire thing, but it's definitely a component of that. And, and with these such, such small numbers, I think it's a big component of it.
Yeah, but you can get very large percentage shifts in a small population.
Correct. All right, so the extended engagement rate is really looking at the five and six-year graduation rates. So we, we can see here, we do have students who earn diplomas even after, after the fifth year or after their sixth year. So we, we are getting more points for this category than we did for the four-year graduation rate. In terms of our dropout, which is on the next slide, we had a point eight percent dropout rate in two thousand sixteen, point five percent in two thousand seventeen. So we earned, we exceeded the target in that category. And with, for instance, high needs students, we did have a decrease of point four percent. So point four percent of two hundred sixteen students, I guess is that's one, a decrease of one student. Is that correct?
Point four percent of two hundred sixteen. It's a possible one.
Yeah. As I mentioned earlier, chronic absenteeism, as you know, the, these numbers were in the upper teens, if not in the twenties, just a few short years ago. The high school made some changes at the beginning of the, I think it was the sixteen-seventeen school year. It dropped significantly to nine point three percent. It's, unfortunately, it did increase this past year to ten point nine percent. So we had a decline, we didn't earn any points. If we just compared it to the two years before that, we would have exceeded the target and been a model for the, for the state. But we did have that slight increase from one year to the next. And as I said, our student hospitalizations are part of this, suspensions are part of this. I mentioned, one of the things that I'm looking at this year is in-school suspensions as an alternative to out-of-school suspensions. That would have some impact on this. But then we also need to find ways to ensure that students who are not present in the school, but who are out for various reasons, if we can track that they are getting a certain amount of instruction, even if it's online instruction each day, if they can reach a certain number of hours in a day, we can actually have those days count as days of instruction. So we just need to explore that as well, to see if there's some way that we can do that a little bit better than what we're currently doing.
Which is one of my questions is, how many hours do they have to be absent to be considered on this sheet? Is it a two-hour block? Is it a four-hour block?
The answer the state gave me was half the day. So what do they define as half, half a day? I'm thinking about three hours, but I need to, I think that's what, what it is, but we just need to be a little bit more specific with that. But if a student is, and I hate to keep saying hospitalized because we don't have, nearly ten percent of our students are not hospitalized, but we do have several. And one point six percent, this, this increase here, we, we have, as I've said before, we've seen increases in, in lots of different student health and mental health instances. And, you know, we do have students who are out for extended periods of time. So it's hard to say, okay, you're, you're struggling through these health problems, but we want you to go on the computer and work, make sure you log in three hours today. It's, it's difficult. But anyway, we, we will look to see how we can, what, what we can do to improve our attendance continuously.
But on that student body, that would work out to be almost a hundred and ten students that would be chronically absent.
Right.
Yeah, so we know that we, we've spent, the faculty has spent a lot of time on the absentee policy and the committee has spent time on the absentee policy. And it's changed, changed significantly two years ago, and then it changed again and it became a little more lax. I'd like to see how these numbers compare to other high schools in the area. One of the ones, and it's very easy for me sitting here and not being in the maelstrom to raise these issues, but there's a very, there's a very high percentage of economically disadvantaged students who are chronically absent, twenty-five, more than twenty-five percent. And I understand the factors that go into being economically disadvantaged may also lead to absenteeism, but it raises the question in my mind as to whether or not we're, we're addressing the needs of these students adequately to get, to try to get them to school more often. I don't know, again, this is just, this is just, you know, off the top of my head, but I'm wondering if some sort of mentorship program might, might help in that area.
But you want, you have to, but you almost have to wonder how much of this data is anomaly-driven because at the same time, if we're going to single out the high needs category, if you look right above it, the lowest performing students actually have a, a much better attendance rate than any other subgroup of the, of the student body.
And I wasn't talking about high needs because?
No, 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 but if you, you know, if you look at one group, you know, if you're going to single out one group and take a look at that, you know, there really needs to be a little bit better understanding as to what's driving this data because the lowest performing group has a pocket, has a attendance rate that's better than any other subgroup identified on this sheet. So why would they be low performing if they're the group that's here most often? So you do have to, you know, with, with any new dataset, you have to try to determine where the anomalies lie.
Well, yes, except I think there are some obvious, Mr. Schoonover mentioned that, you know, absenteeism can be driven by health issues and they're more likely to be in those, those categories. That's why I'm saying I don't think economically disadvantaged would suggest that students are going to have health issues more at a higher rate than any other student. I may be wrong about that. Maybe economically disadvantaged suggests a lower level of medical care. I don't know, but it is a significant number.
Well, I do think that, you know, if we spend some time trying to understand a little better where the data is coming from, it might be beneficial in the long run, especially since this is the first year that we're dealing with this dataset, right?
Hmm, yes.
Do you know if we drill down just, and this might down, be down to the minutia, in regards to two thousand eighteen, as to how many delayed starts we had for snow compared to, and I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to master, what I'm just trying to say is realistically, we have a certain pocket of our students that are school choice, that they have to provide their own transportation. And we also have the distance of Berkeley where, you know, the majority, you know, if those students are driving versus taking the bus, if there is a weather event when we still have school open, maybe there's a safety issue where we might see a rise in absenteeism, absenteeism just because of transportation concerns. I don't know. That's what I'm saying, I don't know if we drilled down to that, that level of detail.
I haven't, but that's very interesting to do.
Thank you.
How do you classify high needs?
High needs is actually economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and English language learners.
So that is the combination of the other groups that?
Yes, if we?
So the two-twenty-three is a combination of the sixty-four, the one-thirty-five, and the six?
Right, but then you may have a student with disabilities who is also economically disadvantaged. So you just can't add, I'm not sure, but adding those numbers together, we're not going, we're going to, two-thirty-five compared to two-twenty-three. So there are some students who fall into multiple categories. But yes, it's, high needs is a combination of those three subgroups.
Okay.
Can, can you, I'm just, why, why would a student with a disability necessarily be economically disadvantaged?
No, I said they wouldn't be.
Or, or, economically disadvantaged.
The high needs is the combination of some of those other categories that you mentioned?
The two hundred twenty-three students who are classified as high needs fall under one of, at least one of three categories, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and English language learners. That's how the state identifies high needs students.
So to go back to my comment you made earlier, it, what's the, the definition of being absent? You said half a day, right? Was that?
That was his, his understanding, with three hours or something.
Yes, it's, I believe it's three hours.
So then how do we report that to the state, right? Because there are tardies and there are absences.
So you can have, if a student comes in at noon, they are marked tardy, absent. You'll see TA for their attendance. They came to school tardy, but they're also considered absent for the day because they exceeded a certain length of time. You'll have some students who come in late, who come in very late and who also get dismissed, so you'll see TAD for their category. So if they, they're tardy, they're considered absent and they were dismissed because the time that they were here was less than a certain amount.
And do our definitions line up with the state's definitions?
They have to, yes.
Okay, all right.
So for an example, if the student had an orthodontist appointment at ten-thirty and the family decided to just keep the child home, go to the orthodontist appointment and then showed up at eleven-thirty, there's a potential that they would be considered tardy slash absent?
Yes.
If it's greater than fifty percent? Three, three hours.
Three hours.
And it doesn't matter if it's excused?
Right.
All right, so this?
Well, chronic absenteeism is whatever, whatever the reason is, if they're not in school, they're absent.
Which is misleading because if it's an orthodontist appointment, there's a note.
I agree. That's why we need to, need to understand this dataset a little bit better before we really get too excited about, I think it's relatively new calculation, because this isn't how they calculated it before, correct?
Chronic absentee, absenteeism has always been calculated that way.
Okay, but it hasn't been as elevated a?
No, this is the first time against this stat.
Right.
But it's a very important, it's a very important criteria because it's one of the factors in determining if a school is, is in need of more stronger state oversight. And some of, some of the schools that were actually in receivership had absentee rates that were just a little bit higher than our absentee rate at its worst.
If students aren't in school, it's difficult for them to learn. So it's critical that they are in this building, in their classrooms, with their teachers, and their peers, learning.
Just so I, because I see George writing furiously, that was at our worst. It has significantly improved over the last few years due to the faculty and administration's hard work.
I do think, though, that would be helpful to, to get a little bit better understanding as to how many students are actually missing, not what the state defines as, you know, a few hours a day or, you know, something like that, but if we had a little bit better handle on exactly what the absentee rates look like in the district. It may be, you know, because again, I think this information is calculated in a, in a completely different way and not quite as practical as the information that those of you in administration deal with every day. So I think it would be helpful to have some sort of report at some point this year as to, you know, what's happening with, you know, absenteeism and break it down into the different categories as students who, you know, maybe addressing some of Mrs. Rothwell's concern, you know, students that missed, you know, part of the day for an excused absence, because excused absences don't count at all on this report, right? Not even a...
No, they do.
No, they do.
Yeah, that's the part that's...
No, 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 meaning that, that this report, just if you're not in school, it's a chronic absentee.
Doesn't matter, it's excused.
But it would be, it would be good to know, you know, what percentage of these missed days are missed for those types of reasons.
Which is excused versus...
Right, so we have our own, there's a school policy for excused absences. If they go to the doctors, they come in with a note, or, you know, for other reasons, which I know the committee's familiar with, they, we will excuse those absences, so it doesn't count toward losing credit for that particular class here, but the state doesn't care about those rules. It's either are they here or not.
Because college visits would, would count as chronic absentee days, right? If we have seniors or juniors that are...
Right, we excuse them here, but they would count as a day of, toward the chronic absenteeism. And students, seniors, I believe, are allowed, it's either three or four days to attend, to visit colleges.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that...
I'm sorry.
But the one, the one, I'm sorry. The one thing that is, I believe, true is that all schools are measured, all schools across the state are measured in the same way, so looking at...
Yes.
And, and all of those numbers are available, because I recall looking at those a few years ago when we had concerns.
Right.
We can look at our numbers in comparison to surrounding school districts and, and see how we stand.
Right.
Because they all have those same issues in terms of college visits and sick kids and the whole gamut of issues.
Okay. So, the next page that you have has two slides that relate to advanced coursework. I'm actually just gonna jump to the second slide, I'll, I'll go back. So, just so you, so you know, and as I said at the beginning of the presentation, advanced coursework, for the most part, it's in any category is whether it's an AP class or an IB class. We don't offer IB, we have, as you know, the advanced placement classes. Only in math and science are there other classes that can count toward these advanced courses, and this is only looking at what juniors and seniors do. So, for instance, US history, kids take that test as sophomores, that does not count for us for advanced coursework, because they're sophomores and not juniors and seniors. But anyway, I listed the courses that we do offer, the two AP Englishes. In math, we have AP Calculus, AP Statistics, but in mathematics, we also have Calculus, Precalculus, and Probability and Statistics. So those courses are on, it's a list that the Department of Elementary and Secondary had published this past year, saying these are all of the courses that satisfy advanced coursework criteria. So those are, in addition to the two AP classes in math, those three classes also satisfy that condition. In science, it's AP Biology, AP Chemistry, and AP Physics. Science does have some other courses, but we just don't offer them, like microbiology, genetics. There are some advanced courses that schools can offer that would satisfy this, we just don't offer them here. With one exception, sometimes a student will be in AP Chemistry, but not, they will not take the AP Chemistry test, their transcript will say Advanced Chemistry, that Advanced Chemistry counts. So, but for the most part, it's AP. In Social Studies, I've listed the four AP classes, there's nothing else besides those. Fine and Performing Arts, we have students take AP Studio Art, and I did include those other options outside of this. Dual enrollment, any student who complete a dual enrollment class, a college-level course, that counts as advanced coursework, as I mentioned IB, and as I also said, those select courses in math and science. So if there's a high school that offers differential equations or linear algebra, multi-variable calculus, those types of really advanced classes would count, but we don't have those. So with that said, going back to this, and I, I was on the phone with Desi earlier today, because I, I find, I believe there's a discrepancy in this number. If we look at this, our 2017 rate was fifty-five point six. That means fifty-five point six percent of all juniors and seniors enrolled in one of those courses I just listed, which I believe is, which, which is accurate. For 2018, it says that ninety-three point three percent of our students, of all juniors and seniors, so ninety-three point three percent of the four hundred seventy-six students listed there took AP classes. That's not true. I don't believe that's true, because otherwise, if we had a hundred students taking Precalculus and trig or Statistics who did not take a single AP class, then perhaps it would be. So I believe that number is, is elevated. So it shows that we gained thirty-seven point seven percentage points. I still think that we are going to be, Desi's looking into it, I have our data specialist who works in district looking at this, so I'm just trying to figure out what the mistake was in going from Somerset Berkeley to the Department of Elementary and Secondary.
Is it the number of tests versus the number of students?
No, it's the percentage of...
Because we had a lot of students taking multiple tests.
It's the percentage of students who completed at least one class. That's, that's the definition of this.
It seems like they looked at the number of students in AP classes and put that or the total number of students.
It, it's all part of what they upload from our system, so I, we actually found one mistake already, that a course that was coded as one thing, and it shouldn't have been, but it was coded that way probably ten years ago or more, whenever the course was created, and it still is that way today. And, so anyway, we're, we're going to correct that, and I'll, it's not going to impact our status at, at all, if, in fact, it is what I think. Anyway, for the assessment participation, this is basically yes or no, did you have at least ninety-five percent of your students, as the whole group or any subgroup, participate? And you can see that our numbers for ELA in math and science all were mostly one hundred, there were a few ninety-eights. So yes, we had participation, so we earned the assessment, or we did not, if any, if a single number on this page was less than ninety-five, we would automatically be in that second category from the right, targeted support.
So do we get points for that? I'm looking, I was looking for the points category.
It's not, it's not a point, so if, if anything falls under ninety-five, then you just automatically, that's, that's really the, the signal to go to the targeted support category rather than meeting targets.
So it's like the first, the first marker, right? Doesn't mean, you could score excellent on everything, but if you don't have ninety-five percent of participation, you're, you're...
So if you recall, two or three years ago, we had the percentage here, there were a few students who were identified, we were at ninety-four percent, I believe ninety-three, ninety-four percent. It caused us to, to drop from a level one to a level two under the old system, and we questioned it, I challenged it, they found the error, and then we, they removed that, which gave us the level one status that year. So you put all of this together, and here's that chart, and it's, it's relative to one of the first slides I showed you. So you can see the achievement total for all students, there were possible twelve points, four for each of the categories, for ELA, math, and science achievement. We earned eleven out of those twelve. For growth, we earned four out of eight, so just putting all of those, exceededs, mets, or did not meets, and so on, into this table. High school completion, we earned seven out of the twelve points. The additional indicators, the absenteeism and the advanced coursework, four out of eight. So really, we earned seven point nine out of ten point seven points, giving us seventy-four percent. Then you do the same thing for the lowest performing, twenty-five percent. And, our lowest performing twenty-five percent, if you were to look back at, at all of those, they did typically better than the all-students category, as Mr. Larrabee pointed out with the attendance. So they earned eighty-four percent of their total points. So then we have these two numbers, seventy-four and eighty-four, just find the average, and we were at seventy-nine percent, because that exceeded seventy-five, we are considered meeting target. And even if, for some reason, the advanced coursework, if we were to get zero out of four points for that category, we would still be meeting our target. So no matter what, even whatever correction, if there is a correction, even the worst kind of correction possible would still not change us from meeting the target.
Do you have any idea if that's typical, that the lowest performing students would be at a higher percentage than all students?
I looked at a handful of these from other districts, and some districts were higher, some, some were much lower, so...
It's, it's interesting that the lowest performing students actually boosted our score.
They did.
In terms of, we ought to give him a pat on the back.
That's improving.
So, if the low performing students, walk me through that a little bit, please, because...
They had more growth.
They had more growth.
Well, actually, the, the growth for the lowest performing was one out of eight, so that, that was the category that, that category was less than the growth for all students. But if you look, twelve out of twelve compared to eleven out of twelve for achievement, so the, the lowest performing group had different targets than all students. They met their targets, met or exceeded their targets.
Okay, so, so right there, so the lower twenty-five had a lower target, which is why they met their goal.
Right.
When you look at the chronic absenteeism, if you spend some time on, you'll notice that the, the all-students earned us zero points out of that category, but the attendance rate of the lower performing students gave us four in that category. So when you look at the way they waited, that was a pretty significant boost for the lower performing.
Which, that I get, but as far as the achievement, right? How do they score four out of four on the achievement of their lowered, lowered twenty-five?
Because they met their target within that category.
So if I'm a lowered twenty-five, I met, if I'm a lowered twenty-five, I have a different target?
Right, so behind me is the LA achievement. The lowest performing, their 2017 number composite score was a ninety-two point five, their target was a ninety-four point three, they earned ninety-six point, they had a ninety-six point four. So they had, we had more students in that lowest performing twenty-five percent, they had a pretty significant jump, three point nine points compared to 2017. When we look at their math, they were an eighty-three point three in 2017 and eighty-nine point one composite score in 2018. So a jump of five point eight, they exceeded that. And in science, from a sixty-nine point four to a seventy-seven, so seven point six point jump there. So in each one of those categories, they had significant increases in their composite score, which landed them in the exceeded, exceeding all of their targets, achievement targets, getting four points in each category. But then when you look at their growth scores, the lowest performing students had an overall growth of twenty-nine point seven and thirty-seven point three.
Where their target was fifteen.
Right. So, and these growth scores are compared to what they had when they were in eighth grade. So the eighth grade score to the tenth grade score, the overall growth, when you compare them to students who had similar scores, they fell in comparison to that peer group, but their achievement was a certain level, which earned, earned them their points. So relatively high achievement for these students, but lower growth at the same time.
And when will the parents receive the MGS data?
They should be, they were delivered earlier this week, and I know the box, well, to central office, the boxes were distributed yesterday, the day before, to schools, so they should be sent home. They should be going out in the mail today, tomorrow, I would expect you to get it over the weekend or early next week. So that was really the last thing, and I just wanted to show, in terms of comparisons, us to some of the neighbors, and I just, just stepping back and looking at the overall achievement score, so taking, you know, moving away from all these different categories and looking back at the standard achievement levels in ELA, math, and science, but also including the target percentage and the accountability percentile. So in terms of just where does the school fit in with its similar schools across the state on a one to ninety-nine scale in terms of, you know, percentage? We are at fifty-nine percent, at the fifty-ninth percentile, so we're better than fifty-nine percent. There are forty-one percent of schools, based on some calculation, that they are better than us. ELA, math, and science, if you look down this list, just down the ELA list, there are some schools who performed, who had a higher percentage of students with proficient, or proficient or advanced. Noran and Annapolis were worth at ninety-seven percent, ORR ninety-five percent. In mathematics, we're eighty-four, we're higher than some, lower than others. Same is true for science. But in terms of all of the schools on this list, with the exception of Westport, because Westport is a combined junior-senior high school, so we can't, you can't really compare them to everyone else, we are the only school on this list that met its target, that's classified as meeting targets. Every other school on this list is partially meeting its targets. So if this were a level one, level two, level three, level four, Somerset Berkeley would be a level one, and these other schools would be level twos, if you wanted to go back and think of it that way, not looking at schools of recognition, as a, that's a special category all by itself. So, just to see where we fall, and I know Ms. Haskell is, based on some of the questions tonight, these are some things we're already talking about anyway, and Ms. Haskell will do a deeper dive at some point as well. We'll revisit this.
I think if the committee has any specific, after having an opportunity to review this, if the committee has specific questions, we can write them down and bring them, bring the questions all together and perhaps have a follow-up presentation.
I thank you for your patience. I know it's, it's, there's a lot of information here, but honestly, I think that this, this is what we, this is what we are about. This is how we're measured at the end of the day. We are much more than test scores, but I think having, making sure that you have a solid understanding of accountability as well as the public and, and how well we're doing, what the areas of, what our strengths are, what our areas of improvement are, it's important for everyone to know.
Anything, anything else under superintendent?
Nope, that, that is enough.
So under new business, schedule superintendent evaluation process, I wanted to put this on the agenda early enough so that we can try to complete this process by either the end of the calendar year or in early January. So we do have, we do have an evaluation committee, but I think we need to try to get the evaluation form in the hands of the committee by, by the end of the month or early in November, so that we can, we have a, we have a, we have a meeting in, one meeting in December, and we have a meeting on January fourth, and perhaps we could, we can shoot for having the process concluded and doing a presentation on January fourth. Does anyone have any other thoughts? Next item is designate delegate for delegate assembly for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Robin, did you check about an alternate?
Yeah, give me the form.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it's on the form.
Oh, do I have the form in this packet?
Yeah.
Anyway, as long as we know there's an alternate, I, I do intend to be at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees conference pretty much from the beginning until close to the end. However, Friday evening is the North Elementary School presentation of Cinderella here at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. And I am expected to be at that performance. So I, I may be leaving the Cape a little early to avoid any traffic. So has, I don't believe anyone else, Mr. Giliducci is attending. I don't believe anyone else on the committee is attending.
I'm attending for Berkeley this year.
So what I was going to suggest is perhaps I could be designated as the delegate with Mr. Giliducci as the alternate. And if I need to leave, I, because I, in some years, in some years, the delegate assembly is on Thursday, but I believe this year is on Friday afternoon at like three o'clock.
Trying to make people stay longer, that's what I do.
So if that's acceptable, I'd, I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
I make a motion that, that we designate Mr. Pierce as our delegate with Mr. Giliducci as the alternate if Mr. Pierce needs to leave because he's playing Cinderella.
I'll second that.
Right? Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. So will you take care of sending that form in, Robin? Thank you. All right. So under budget and finance matters, approval of monthly invoices, is there any, are there any questions about the monthly invoices? All right. So I'd ask everyone to sign those monthly invoices before you leave this evening. Next item, date of first, two thousand eighteen, two thousand, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, budget subcommittee meeting. And unfortunately, two, the chair and another member of that subcommittee are not here this evening, so I don't, has there been any preliminary discussion about a possible date? I'm anxious to have the budget, so I know it might seem early, but there's an issue, there's a, there's one issue that we need to discuss. I believe the budget committee needs to discuss, and then come to us with a recommendation that's more pressing time-wise. So what was, was there discussion?
We're meeting prior to our meeting.
Prior to the, all right. So let's say that that's ten eighteen. Under other matters and information, report on school safety advisory board. And I am a member of that committee. I know the superintendent, you can perhaps elaborate on, on some of the details. But the safety committee for the regional school district and the Somerset K eight school district met on September twenty-fifth at the North Elementary School. The superintendent indicated that certain district personnel attended an actor shooter symposium in September. One of the important topics was a discussion of newer, more sophisticated door locks for classrooms, which will be investigated particularly at the K eight level. There was discussion of the fact that the, there would be a juvenile justice law update, which was, or there, there had been a juvenile justice update in September presented by attorney Patrick Rogers to all SROs or open to all CROs in southeastern, SROs, sorry, in southeastern Massachusetts, which had been arranged by Chief McNeil. The recent legislation on juvenile, related to juvenile justice, has placed more limits in dealing with juveniles, both in the community and in schools. Attorney Rogers materials are available to the committee. I believe they, were they distributed, the full packet of materials was distributed to everybody on the committee. And as an follow-up to that, there was discussion among the committee regarding the need for early intervention and increased and timely services for students who appear to be developing behavioral issues, which could lead to greater problems as they progress through school. There was also discussion of the fact that the security app for teachers is in the process of being installed on desktop computers. The apps will not be available on cell phones as it would be, as, they would be susceptible to false alarms. The high school principal did express some reservations about use at the high school because some teachers do not have assigned classrooms and would be required to log in perhaps several times during the course of the day. The committee was advised that Alice drills are currently in process in all schools. Chief McNeil proposed an open forum for parents within the next month or two to discuss safety issues. This would be open to parents from both the K eight district and the high school. Both police and school officials would be present to answer parents' questions. And I'm not sure if anything, any further progress has been made.
We don't have a date yet.
Don't have a date yet. And finally, there was a request from principals regarding the status of signs to be posted on school property excluding non-school persons from school grounds while the school is in session. So those were the issues that were discussed at the meeting. I don't know if you have anything to add, Mrs. Scunover?
No, I think that's a good summary.
Okay. So next item is Somerset and Berkeley K eight updates. Mr. Giliducci, do you have anything further to add?
No, because our meeting isn't until twenty-second. And Guy gave a couple of things that he mentioned, and that, that's it. And he'll be reporting in the future.
Okay, very good. Do you have anything to report from the Somerset K eight school district?
Well, there's a few things that we did bring up as informational items on the K eight that I thought would be important, which was the Reed Across America for December fifteenth, because we had talked about possible community service as well for our students, if they were to be involved in that. I don't remember the, I don't have it written down. I think it's nine-thirty to twelve-thirty, it were the timeframes?
Yes, it is.
On that, okay, so.
Yeah, we read that letter at our last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry to be redundant.
No, no, that's, that's fine, it's a good reminder.
And did we discuss that the SROs were at a conference?
Yes, that was, that was-
Okay.
Juvenile justice.
Juvenile justice, okay, thank you, I had that written wrong. And we had a meeting on the twenty-fourth. We discussed some warrants that we are going to have for the town meeting. And we also approved the Dartmouth collaborative that we had discussed at our last meeting. So that was, that was passed at our meeting.
Actually, I don't know if, I have all of these dates on my calendar, but just a further reminder, I think we talked about the Music Town Festival at our last meeting. But since then, I have, we've received notice of many of the events and the dates. So let me see if I can just bring that up so that people within the community will be aware of these dates.
I have October twentieth for Music Town.
The eleventh is that, the Mr. Martin.
Yes, I've got, I should, I turned my phone off so I wouldn't interrupt the meeting. Now it's going to take a moment to, to open it up. The first, I believe, I believe the first event is, it's from you, Mr. Larabee. I was saying you're going to be late. The first event is October eleventh, and that's the Music Town Ball. So anyone who would like to purchase a ticket, that's, I believe, on Thursday night at the Venus de Milo. And I, I believe this year, for the first time, the show choir is going to be performing as well as the band, which, which has typically performed in the past, but that's a new component of the entertainment at the ball. Then on Saturday, October thirteenth, is Music Town Kids Day from nine to eleven a.m. I'll be there. The next event is Tuesday, October sixteenth, the Pops Concert at seven p.m. The next event is on Thursday, October eighteenth, which is the Music Town Concert, again at seven p.m. in the Performing Arts Center. And then on Saturday, the twentieth, the Music Town Parade from twelve-thirty on, followed by the Music Town Field Show from four-thirty in the afternoon to eight-thirty p.m. on our, in our stadium behind the high school. So I'm sure that the music program would welcome participation in as many of these events as people are interested in doing. I think the Pops Concert and the music concert Tuesday and Thursday night are extremely well-done and very entertaining. My granddaughter enjoys the Kids Day on Saturday morning. So we hope everyone will come out and support those events. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of prior meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes of August twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
So, second?
Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Rothwell. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Next item is the, I will entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes of September twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved. Second?
Motion made by Mr. Giliducci and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. And Mr. Larabee, I'll leave it to you to deal with the executive session minutes of September twentieth. I wasn't present.
Looking for a motion to approve the executive session minutes of September twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. I'm not aware of any topics, not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Are there any action items for future meetings? Is there any public input? We have listed an executive session, but I don't believe there's anything under that, that item that needs to be considered this evening. If that being the case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
Motion made by Mr. Giliducci and seconded by Mrs. Rothwell. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
I'm just going to become a circle.